Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dominguez, Hart.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
Maria.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Here.
Mayor Snyder.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then now's the time for public comment. If you haven't, this is for items that are not on the agenda. If you have not submitted a slip, please do so now. I'll start with Michael Baker, who is joined by Karen Hamada.
Afternoon, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Michael Baker, CEO for United Boys and Girls Clubs. First and foremost, I want to thank you for your continued support. Appreciate everything you're doing to help us on the West Side. I actually have a speaker that's coming after me today that I wanted to give you a brief overview on. Karen Hamada is an intern with the Boys and Girls Clubs, which will make a couple of you proud. She's a UCSB sophomore, now going to be a junior, majoring in Communications, and she's been spending quite a bit of time with our organization, doing a lot of press releases. Actually had six different pieces of her work published, so we're really happy for her, and she's been doing great work. And one of the assignments that I gave her was she's going to have to come here and give a public comment to the City Council about the great work that's happening with the Boys and Girls Clubs. So, without any further ado, I'm going to end my time and then turn it over to Karen Hamada.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Hello, I'm Karen Hamada, and as you said, I am a student at UCSB, and I'm a Communication major. I've been an intern with the United Boys and Girls Clubs since around February. Right now, I'm going to talk about the West Side campus and the work that Priscilla Hernandez has been doing there as a club director. She has been, as a club director there, for a year and a half, and she's someone that I can see genuinely cares about the work she's doing, and she's putting a lot of time and effort into ensuring that the kids not only have a safe place to be, but that they're also exposed to a lot of new things and can discover new things and try out things that they might not be able to outside of the clubs. And a lot of this is made possible through programs, and this is done through partnerships with different organizations. And before Priscilla took on her role, there were mainly two partnerships with Optimist and Kuanis, but now there are over a dozen partnerships that she's created, and this is all her work. And some of the examples are World Dance for Humanity, which comes and puts on classes and workshop for the kids, and there's also a new one with Family Services Agency, which puts on counseling services for the kids who might be having hard times at home. And another big one is Spark, which is a research-based PE organization, and they have 365 activities, one for each day of the year, that the kids can participate in. And all of these programs are not just about teaching the kids the skills and how to do arts or sports, but it's teaching them important traits that they need later in life, whether that be good sportsmanship, teamwork, confidence, ambition, and just so much more. And this is all really made possible because of the staff there, and those staff are led by Priscilla Hernandez. And it's really evident that this is becoming a community center because of all the organizations that are taking part at the West Side Club and contributing with these programs. And it's really Priscilla that deserves a lot of recognition, and she's doing a lot of rewarding work, and I think that her work should not go unnoticed. And for anyone that would like to see Priscilla and her team at work, we really do encourage anyone to come schedule a tour at the West Side Club, or even to look at our website at unitedbg.org to find out more information. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Fran Forman.
Good afternoon and thank you. I am here to support another report that will be made, but I wanted to share with you something that I observed today as a citizen that was just so heartwarming. And there was a woman on the street, clearly in distress. It's somebody who we all know, who lives on the street, and there were six city of Santa Barbara staff, police, trying to help this woman. She was clearly not up for the help, and she clearly needed the help. There was an ambulance there. They were trying to get her to a place. But I was thinking how important it is to recognize the role of police in our community and what they do as far as our particular community, and how the people who are in the most distress with the least services are in the hands of our police, that we ask them to take care of that. So I'm just here, with all that's going on in the country, to appreciate Santa Barbara City Police. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker, as I understand it, wants to use several people's time, so we'll start with Dr. Mark Schneep, and then I'll ask if Tara Newman is available? Is she here? Is that right? Can you raise your hand, please? And Kirby Shane Allen, is that right? Okay. Joseph Bowns, and Chase Resic?
Present.
Okay. Okay, so that then leaves, that gives you then, Dr. Schneep, five, 10 minutes. One, two, three, four, five. Hang a second while I tweak the machine up here. Okay.
Okay, I'm Mark Schneep, Principal of the Economic Forecast. We're located next to Cottage Hospital in Galita Valley. I'm here to give you an update on the STR industry that I think that you're going to find interesting. I've addressed the City Council many times, but this is a particular issue that we've studied, and we've produced two reports on it, which are in front of you. These studies have never really been done any time before. We can't find any indication of these on the Internet for any jurisdiction, so these are somewhat groundbreaking. But the two issues that we wanted to address, and again, I'm not an advocate of STRs. I have no skin in the game, but we do do analytical studies, and these were the two that we did. One was dealing with the supply. Is there a valid concern that the long-term rental housing supply in the city of Santa Barbara is negatively impacted by STRs? There's an allegation about that, so we looked at that. And the other allegation was that STRs perhaps could jeopardize neighborhood safety, so we looked at that, too. So those are the two issues I want to talk about. I want to talk about economic impacts. There's a lot of studies done on that, but I want to talk about these two things. To do that, we had to do a survey. We had to do a survey of STR owners, so that's what we did. We conducted one on the two principal vacation rental websites, homeway.com and airbnb.com. And surveys that were actually sent out by homeway.com on our behalf was about 1,051. Additional Airbnb surveys, which weren't on the homeway.com site, 336. Some local management companies for STRs and under 270, so we sent out 660 total surveys. And again, you get to answer them if you want to. So to minimize the possibility of survey selection bias, we replaced, we prefaced the survey with the following description: "This survey is for owners of short-term rental properties. Nine questions. Can be answered in 60 seconds. Your responses are completely confidential and anonymous. Your responses are being used in a study about the short-term rental industry in Santa Barbara. Thank you for responding." No advocacy, no agenda, didn't indicate anything, just a study of STRs. So we got 319 responses back. That was a 19% response rate, all right? And for 660 population of surveys, that comes out to be a 95% confidence level with 3.6 plus or minus margin of error. So it's pretty good, pretty good sample size. We can rely on the results. Now, as you might think, here are some of the key responses, key results of the survey. 87% of the owners rent out their entire house, just what we'd think, okay? That means 13% don't. They ran out a bedroom, or whatever the case may be. However, and this is something that we don't really think about, is only 15% of owners rent their home full-time during the year, meaning that 85% rent it part-time. Why? Why do 85% rent part-time? Because they use the house themselves, okay? 46% rent their homes 90 or fewer days of the year. Another 20% rent their homes 180 fewer days of the year. So 2/3 of all owners rent their house as a short-term rental half of the year or less, okay? One of the other questions we asked was, "If STR activity is banned, what would you do? What's the disposition of the home? What are you going to do about that?" 12% said they just live in the home full-time, okay? And 49% said they would continue to rent, but they would observe the 30-day minimum, because there is a market for that, all right? 5.6% said they would rent long-term, right? So they would add to the rental supply. 11% said they would sell the property. And 22% admitted that they would continue to rent for less than 30 days, despite the ban. So, go figure. Anyway, the two answers that go to the long-term supply of housing are these two. They'd rent long-term, and they would sell the property. That was about 16% total. But 16% doesn't really tell us anything. We need to know what that's going to translate into actual numbers. So we got supply numbers for number of STRs and the total housing stock in the city of Santa Barbara. There are 38,000 housing units in the city. There are 147,000 in the entire county. The estimated STR inventory, well, we got this from the TXP study that came out in the fall of last year. They were doing economic impacts, all right? 2,550. And 1,193 of those STRs are in the city of Santa Barbara. It's a relatively update-fresh inventory that we have from a previous study. Now, that 1,193 represents 3.1% of the total housing supply in the city of Santa Barbara, all right? Now, going back to the survey, we have 5.6% of STR owners said that they would rent long-term under a ban, and 11% said they would sell under a ban, okay? So we can do the mathematics and get the actual numbers, and here's what they are. City of Santa Barbara, 67 units of long-term rentals are lost due to STR activity, and 131 units are lost for sale due to STR activity. Sum the two, 198. 198 units represents half of a percent of the housing supply in the city. And if we do the same thing for the county, it represents 0.2% of the supply in the county, all right? So it's very, very small numbers. It's because STRs really aren't used full-time. Other questions that we asked, which go to important information here, "What's the market value of these properties?" we asked. And 1.5 to 3 million were answered by 32% of owners. 3 million and above were answered by 35% of owners. And for renting, it was $3,000 to $5,000 a month by 22%, and 5,000 and over 44%. Clearly, 2/3 of all these properties are not going to rent or sell for prices that would be considered affordable housing, okay? Because we're talking about the cream of the crop, houses that are used for STR. Conclusions: The evidence doesn't justify the perception that the operation of STRs in the county or the city materially impact the housing supply for residents. It just doesn't. And only a negligible increase in the long-term housing supply would be created from the prohibition of STRs. Furthermore, only about 1/3 of that negligible increase could be considered affordable, all right? Benji, how much time do I have?
You have a little clock there that should show you.
Oh, okay, let me start the second one, and maybe one of my cohorts can finish. The other question we asked is, "Do short-term rentals generate an abnormal number of nuisance complaints in Central Coast cities?" Nuisance reports include these things: noise, abandoned autos, trash, parking on the lawn, storing stuff outside. We looked at these cities. We looked at San Luis, Santa Maria, Alamo, Solvang, Galita, Santa Barbara, Carbonary, Ventura, Thousand Oaks. Look at all those. Now, nuisance reports data doesn't really exist for most of those areas for STRs, only for Santa Barbara, Ventura, and Galita. That's it, because they're encoded STRs, right? Zoned that way, not monitored in the county of Santa Barbara or all the other cities. But when we looked at those cities in which there were, there were no reports of nuisance complaints in Ventura or in Galita for the entire time period that they've been monitored. And in the city of Santa Barbara, 82 total nuisance complaints from 2006 to 2016 through May of this year, total, total. Here's what they look like over time. 2006, 2016, the 2016 number right there is for the first five months of the year, all right? So, for the 10-and-a-half-year period, the rate of nuisance reports or complaints for STRs average about eight per year in the city of Santa Barbara. And per STR per year, it comes out to be this tiny little number, 0.00662, per STR per year, okay? But that doesn't mean anything. What's that little number? It means nothing until you can compare it with what the normal complaint rate is for all homes, right? To see if it's higher or lower. So we did that. Here's the city of Santa Maria, San Luis, Thousand Oaks, Santa Barbara. We even took out Isla Vista, because they get a lot of complaints, and even that rate was higher than the STR rate in the city of Santa Barbara. Now, for the city of Santa Barbara, there were 2,624 reports of complaints of the kind of nuisances I showed you up front over the 10-and-a-half years. That's 250 per year. It comes out to 0.00669 per home. Okay, here's what they look like over time, for all homes and for STRs. All homes were above in the early period, then STRs were a little bit above, and now for the last 2015 and 2016, right there and there, they're either tied, or all nuisance reports are higher.
Okay.
30 seconds, okay? Conclusions: Here are the two nuisance report rates for STRs and all homes. They're statistically indifferent, all right? So compared to other cities, nuisance reports per home in Santa Barbara are substantially less for STRs or otherwise. And those are really the conclusions of my two root studies that you have.
Okay. Thank you.
I had one question I wanted to ask, if I may.
I have a question as well, Mr. Mayor.
Right, thank you.
The statistic you had about, you questioned people if they would continue to operate the STRs, and did you break that down by zones where it's currently permitted or not?
We just asked if there was a ban, so it could, point-blank.
Okay.
So it didn't really matter.
So it's kind of a fictional hypothetical for those who are living in areas where it is legal?
Right.
Okay.
It wasn't phrased as, "The city of Santa Barbara is going to impose a ban beginning in 2017. What are you going to do?" It was, "Suppose there's a ban," because the county could adopt a ban, or any city could adopt a ban at any time, but we want to know what they're going to do.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if you could go back to your first slide. So your survey was sent to two websites or two platforms, is that right? HomeAway and... Right. So you didn't send it to Airbnb or other platforms?
We sent it to homeway.com, and they agreed to send it out.
Dr. Schneep, can you get on?
Stay by the mic, yeah.
And they agreed to send it out for us.
Oh, okay.
Using all our language and everything. It just came from them. And then, because we know there's duplicates, because people advertise on both websites, we only used the Airbnb website to get all the other properties that are on homeway.com, so that we could get more players to answer the survey.
Okay, and my second question, Mr. or Dr. Schneep, is, and who hired you to do this survey and to come make the presentation today?
Paradise Retreats hired us to...
Paradise Retreats, who make a lot of money in this business, so thank you for that, sir.
Okay. Please speak in the mic. You'll get your chance to speak here momentarily.
Okay, very good, thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, I just, you know, would like to thank this. We see what we're up against now for enforcement. It was a 7 to 0 unanimous vote, what the city is doing with this industry. So I'm, thank you. Thank you for the information.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss?
I have a quick question, if I could. You didn't ask people that were not STR owners if they wanted to have an STR next door to them?
No, no.
Thank you.
It was just asked of STR owners what they would do. We only asked five questions. We didn't want to make it an onerous survey. We wanted everybody to respond as much as possible, so you could do the whole thing in 60 seconds.
Thank you. All right, so the next speaker is Theo Crackey. And again, there are folks that want to give their time to him. Leo Arhart, Becky Crackey, you hear?
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I'm not going to need...
Don McWurter?
Here.
Is here. Many Moore, Mindy, Jen Waddell, okay, Waddill. Okay, is that five? One, two, three. Okay, so you have 10 minutes?
Okay, I'm not going to need them all. Actually, Mark was...
Mr. Mayor, don't we have a limit on the total amount of time for public comment, at 30 minutes?
I think we do.
I think we should apply that and allow people who are not here as part of an organized presentation to allow them, or is this the last?
I'm not going to need 10 minutes. I'll need 2 minutes, max. Because I'm just here to clarify, because Mark was able to get through the presentation of his two studies, which is, yes, the organization, strsantabarbar.org, did fund the studies, because we are advocates for the fair regulation of the short-term rental industry in Santa Barbara, not for prohibition. We understand the positives of this industry. The economic impact report proved that this industry brings $470 million in overall economic impact to the countywide, creates over 5,000 jobs. It gives existing homeowners a way to afford their homes, and it gives families an affordable option for traveling to Santa Barbara when trying to get three or four hotel rooms on a weekend is completely out of a lot of people's budgets. So that's the why, and that's why we are in favor of short-term rentals. I have 24 staff that rely on this industry in the face of this prohibition that's impending. Lots of jobs are going to be at risk because of that. So we have a lot at stake. In addition to that, since we started strsantabarbar.org, we've grown to over 815 members. We've raised money. People are happily giving us money to fund studies such as what Mark did, because we are trying to bring facts to a conversation where anecdotes have been guiding the whole story. There's no studies that show exactly what is the effect of short-term rentals on the long-term housing supply. Sure, it's easy to believe, and there are certainly isolated examples where housing for long-term has been converted to short-term, and that will certainly affect people's ability to rent houses in the community. But there is so much good from this industry that a complete prohibition is not the correct solution. Let's put fair regulation into place. Let's gain all the benefits. Let's fund all of the city attorney's work on enforcement for people that aren't abiding by the regulation through the TOT taxes generated, which is over, if everybody in town was paying, it would be over 3.6 million per year to the city. You need two signals on Solow that's paid for in six months. So I'm telling you, there's lots and lots of really good things that are happening because of short-term rentals, and there's a lot of people that are passionate and for the regulation of it, and there are certainly people passionate against it, too. But that's a recipe for compromise. It's not a recipe for just steamrolling over one side in the favor of the other, in particular, when it's in the face of data-supported scientific facts that show that the reasons for most people's decisions, it's affecting the housing supply, it's destroying the character of neighborhood, of residential neighborhoods, are not true. They're overstated substantially. So I'm just here to kind of give you the context of why Dr. Schneep was here, and we're just trying to continue this conversation. Lots is at risk come when the enforcement action starts in January of 2017. And I'd just like to really have you, as leaders of our community, consider the other side and the other people that are affected by this, not just the housing, people are looking for housing and neighborhood, neighbors that are worried about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klon?
Thank you. Members of the council, there is something I want to clarify. The council has not imposed a ban on vacation rentals. The city's code for somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 years has not allowed hotels in residential neighborhoods. So this is not a situation where a ban is going into effect January 1, 2017. That is already the law. What the council approved was that we are putting tax-paying vacation rentals at the lowest priority level, and we don't expect to begin shutting them down until January of 2017. But they have no right to operate right now, and I want to clarify that, because the premise here, both on this website and the paid comments you've heard this afternoon, is that the council's imposing a ban, not true. Number two, that there's a right to operate currently, not true.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, our next speaker is Randy Resic. So you're passing on your minutes, all right? Nate Neenhues, Neinhues? Same. And then Becky Crackey is the last speaker.
The reason I'm going to speak, I've passed on speaking many times, but I would like to address Ms. Morello's comment about our company financially benefiting from vacation rentals, and perhaps that's our motivation to pay for these reports. And one of the things that I want to put out in public comment is that our company makes 20%. That's what we charge our clients, 20% as a management fee. Now, we have paid the city of Santa Barbara 12% in addition. We have a staff of 26 people, and with that 20%, we pay our staff. However, the city of Santa Barbara has made 12% for the last 10 years we've paid. And I think that's important to know, because that's a straight 12% to you. So you have benefited financially as well, Ms. Morello, and the city of Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Just a quick comment, if I could, Ms. Crackey. Nothing wrong with you paying for this excellent report. That's fine. That's expected and a smart move. Thank you.
Okay, well, then that takes us then to the consent agenda. I'm imagining that Mr. Hart would like to pull item two. Would that be correct?
Mr. Mayor, I believe there might be some items the clerk needs to read.
Oh, I'm sorry. Need to read them in. Excuse me.
Item number one, adoption of ordinance to approve two encroachment permit agreements related to Peabody Stadium project at Santa Barbara High School, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving that encroachment permit agreement to allow Santa Barbara High School Peabody Stadium facilities to encroach within portions of city lands underlying a vacated portion of Figueroa Street, an untraveled portion of Figueroa Street, and a vacated portion of South Spadie Street, and also approving an encroachment permit agreement to allow other portions of Peabody Stadium facilities to encroach within untraveled portion of Reconda Road, both agreements with the City of Santa Barbara School District, the owner of Santa Barbara High School at 700 East Annapamooe Street, and Santa Barbara County Assessor Parcel Numbers 029-180-009, 029-240-003, and 029-240-008, and authorizing the Public Works Director to execute same. Item number two, adoption of ordinance for city administrator merit salary increase, recommending that council adopt by title of, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending ordinance number 5706, the salary plan for the city administrator for fiscal year 2016 and fiscal year 2017 to provide a 5% merit increase effective February 6, 2016. Item number three, acceptance of water meter agreement and easement for 510 and 520 North Spadie Street and 601 East Haley Street, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving an agreement for access to water meters and sub-meters, and accepting a grant of easement for 510 and 520 North South Spadie Street and 601 East Haley Street.
Thank you. All right, now, I'm imagining Mr. Hart would like to pull item two.
Yes.
All right, and then, Mr. Hotchkiss, you want to pull five, and then we have public comment on item six. So first of all, can we have a motion on item two?
I move item two, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion, my name is Maria, second by Mr. Rouse. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. It's ordered. Then, item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to...
Want to read, see, that is the Community Promotion Contract.
Yes. Community Promotion Contract for the Santa Barbara Region Chamber of Commerce to Support a Visitor Information Center.
I had several requests to enumerate, if Mr. Oplinger would do that, enumerate how you go about promoting, who you choose to promote, all that stuff, so that people understand the relationship of the Chamber of Commerce with business at large. So if he could, if I can invite him up to speak to that, I'd like to.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Oplinger?
Mr. White, members of the council, Ken Oplinger from the Santa Barbara Chamber. Thank you for asking me to come. Councilmember Hotchkiss. So in brief, our rule at the visitor center, at the airport visitor center, and at the tables that we have for the cruise ships, for all of those, is that we will provide information about anyone and anything in Santa Barbara. We don't limit the verbal information that's provided. At the visitor center itself, as most of you know better than I, because you've been here much longer, we have about 400 square feet. I think most of your bedrooms... I think most of your bedrooms are probably much larger than that. We have very limited space, and so in order to deal with the space and to deal with the fact that the contract that we have with you covers about 20% of the cost of running all the visitor information services, we do limit the space for brochures inside just to members of the chamber. But, you know, verbally, we provide information to everyone, everyone has access to the calendar of events that's provided, we put posters up for anybody. At the cruise ship tables, we provide information for everyone, because we have the room to do that. So that's the only limitation that we have, is just in that area where, in order to be able to deal with the fact that we've got limited space, we have to limit the brochures that we have inside, so.
If somebody supplied you with brochures, is there a table they could put them out if they were not a member of the chamber? Is that a hard and fast rule?
Well, the problem is, is that we really can't even put them outside, just because of issues of the wind coming through, and so we never put anything outside, it's just in that little space there. And so, you know, if this was really important to someone, and we wanted to talk about it, I'm sure we could find a way to do that, but generally, that is the rule, just because we have such limited space, we can't even get enough brochures in there for our members. That's how-
I understand the challenge. Can they call you if they have a, would like to somehow work around that?
It'd be my pleasure to tackle them, I'll talk to them, absolutely.
Okay, fine, thank you.
My pleasure.
Ms. Morello?
Thank you. I looked through the contract, and I didn't see a reference to the living wage provision. You and I serve on the Living Wage Committee together.
Absolutely.
So, what do you pay your employees in there?
Our full-time staff-
Our minimum wage, or, I'm sorry, our living wage?
Living wage, right.
Our living wage.
So our full-time staff that is at our visitor centers do make well over what the living wage number is. The part-time staff do not, but I would put forward to you that that's no different than your parking attendants, your Parks and Rec staff, who are also part-time, and the city does not pay them a living wage either.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Oplinger. So, Mr. Mayor, I, Exhibit A was given to me late in the, I have the contract, and I'm willing to vote for this, I just, I think the Exhibit A about what you do and how you spend your money should be a little more robust. I'd like to know more about what you do there, because it's a public resource.
Well, I'm happy to do that, Ms. Morello, we certainly not, we provided the same, I think, spreadsheet on the financials for this over the last 30, 40 years we've had this contract. So I'm more than happy to provide more. I will tell you that, you know, a couple of years ago, in an effort to continue the positive relationship, we actually put the effort forth to be able to provide some of the services at the airport. Two years later, that money was cut. We've maintained that facility there now for over a year at, with no funding coming from the city at all, at our cost, and have done so because we want to maintain that relationship. So I think we've demonstrated the fact that we want to continue to do this, and we want to do it for the public benefit, and that's just one example, so.
Thank you, Mr. Oplinger, for telling us about the airport. I'm addressing my comments to the council, thank you, that I think the contract should reflect something about the living wage, because somewhere in here, in the legalese, it says that this contract is the entire agreement related to this agreement. So, it should say something about the living wage provision in there. And I would, in the future, like to see a more, you know, robust description of what they do. And then finally, a comment that because the visitor center is a public building, and a public resource, rather, that every business should have access to it, and that there not be a preferential treatment of chamber members. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Morello, I just wanted to, Nina Johnson, Assistant to the City Administrator, just wanted to mention, we looked into our living wage ordinance, and the living wage ordinance doesn't apply to a nonprofit organization.
Okay, thank you.
Right, but this is a 501(c)(6), so I'd like to look into that. I'm not sure, it's not a 501(c)(3), it's a political organization of 501(c)(6), so.
Right, so, do you want to have this-
So if the council is wanting to put this forward today, I think I'll just have to say no. I'll, or, no, I'll vote no, because I have issues with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, so do we have a motion on item five, then?
We do.
Motion by Mr. Hotchkiss, second by Mr. Rouse. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so we have a 5, 501 vote there. Thank you. All right, then, item six. Could you read that into the record? Madam Clerk, please.
Contract for Legal Services for Wastewater Collection System Consent Decree.
Okay, and we have public comment by Kira Redmond.
Good afternoon, council. Santa Barbara Channel Keeper has invoked dispute resolution pursuant to our consent decree that settled our sewage lawsuit, and we had our meet and confer with your staff and attorney yesterday. We had hoped to begin a cooperative conversation between our engineers and your staff about how to move the city toward compliance with the Clean Water Act and the original purpose of our lawsuit, stopping the pollution caused by the city's excessive sewage spills. Unfortunately, your outside counsel for Myers-Nave did all of the talking for the city and focused on legalistic arguments. He stated that an extension of our consent decree to implement system improvements and demonstrate their efficacy is likely a non-starter. When Channel Keeper first filed this lawsuit five years ago, the city said, "Trust us. We are already addressing the problem of excessive sewage spills. We've contracted with Brown and Caldwell to help us fix it." We went along with that and agreed to a consent decree that required the city to implement Brown and Caldwell's recommendations and reduce spills. Well, that didn't happen, and here we are. And the city is again saying, "Trust us, we're contracting with Brown and Caldwell, and we'll implement their recommendations, and spills will come down. We mean it this time." Channel Keeper has made it clear, we are not going away without an extension of our consent decree to allow time for the city to prove that improvements to your sewage system management program are actually working and are effective in reducing spills. Our consent decree expires in March of 2017. Channel Keeper is not going to just walk away and let the city off the hook without additional time to prove that it's going to work this time. I can't imagine a judge doing that either, if it comes to that, which I hope it doesn't. Other municipalities have agreed to extend consent decrees with other water keepers when they've exceeded their spill standards to improve their programs and demonstrate compliance. If the city refuses to extend, we will seek an order from the court to hold the city in contempt of the consent decree and lay out, and to lay out a very detailed prescriptive requirements about how the city must run its program. And the city will spend a lot more money on lawyers rather than on fixing the problem. Please tell your attorneys that you will agree to an extension of the consent decree, and to seriously engage with Channel Keeper's engineers, so we can finally get on with fixing the sewer system and stopping the spills. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, do I have a motion for the, oops. Mr. Klon?
Thank you. I want to comment on the situation with Channel Keeper. I've had about a 10-minute briefing last night following the meeting. I'd prefer not to engage in ad hominem attacks about who said what and why they said it. I don't know whether our outside counsel made legalistic arguments. What I do know is that our office, in conjunction with the staff, will evaluate the situation and advise the city council on your options going forward. It is absolutely false to say that, or to imply, rather, that the outside counsel has made some kind of decision binding on the council that we would prefer to go to court defending a contempt order rather than otherwise looking at the consent decree. So, I think that comment is unfortunately necessary, given the implications of what we heard from Channel Keeper.
Thank you for that clarification. And with that, do we have a motion for approval of the rest of the consent agenda?
So.
There's a motion by Rouse, and second by Hart. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the consent agenda. Okay, so that moves us along. Item seven, Madam Clerk.
Presentation from South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Saul Serano, Coordinator for the South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety. And I want to start this afternoon by thanking the City of Santa Barbara for, and this council, for your continued support, in particular, you know, for the support that you, your staff also provides to this effort, which includes the city administrator's office, Assistant Administrator Paul Casey-Pamantel, and the Santa Barbara Parks and Recreation Department, the Santa Barbara Police Department, and many other city resources that partner in this effort. And also the other cities and other partners that are a part of this, which includes City of Galida, City of Carpinteria, and incorporated part of the Santa Barbara County, or Santa Barbara County as well, as well as the Community Action Commission. So with all that, you know, just wanted to say thank you for the vision that this council has had in continuing this work and supporting it in the past, and continue to support it now, moving forward. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here today. But, we are here today because in 2007, the City of Santa Barbara specifically saw an increase in youth homicides related to youth gangs, with the one happening on Saks Fifth Avenue, followed by the one at the beach during 4th of July fireworks, which really prompted this council and the city to direct city staff to convene the community. And after convening the community, it was, after a year of convening, it was found that there was already a lot of resources, a lot of programs in the community, but what was lacking was coordination. And what was lacking was really bringing it all together into a, into a really directed effort with direction and achievable's. And so, you know, we, that's where it started, and then direction, then also including the other partners in the cities to this partnership. And so now, we've been operating for five and a half years as a task force, initially as the South Coast Task Force on Youth Gangs, and now as the South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety. In 2015, let me, let me back up a little bit, and also mention that, you know, there's, the task force is composed of 39 members, stakeholders, that include law enforcement, elected officials, representatives of government, community organizations, faith community, business community, and parents and youth. And, you know, this group meets on a quarterly basis to receive updates, reports, and the work really, on a month-to-month basis, is being done by the strategy team. And we have a few members of the strategy team here today, which include Mark Alvarado from the city, Fran Foreman from Community Action Commission, Fran Wagonick from the Santa Barbara Unified School District, Director of Student Services, and we also have a case manager from the CalGrep program, which we'll share later here with this Christian Hymiss, also here in support of, you know, the work that's gone on. So the strategy team, which meets on a monthly basis, determined that, you know, we've been operating for five years, we've seen some success, but it was important to really, you know, get some feedback as to where, what have we achieved, and where are we going. And so with this, we, we were able to attain a consultant, which happens to be a past staff of City of Santa Barbara, Marcelo Lopez, who helped us really do a comprehensive work to interview stakeholders in the community and find out, collect their feedback as to, you know, what have we accomplished, and what do we need to do next. And overall, the feedback that was received, it was about 90 pages, and if you've worked with Marcelo, you know that it was very thorough as to what he was able to, the feedback to collect, very diverse voices. And there were 34 people that were interviewed. Out of those 34, the majority said, you know, "We've accomplished good things, and we should keep going." There was one person who said, you know, "Maybe it's to go away, maybe it's time that, you know, we close this up." But overall, the consensus was that now's not the time to stop, because as we've learned from the past, when we close efforts like this, it's cyclical, and it comes right back up again. And so for us to continue to remain vigilant to the issues that are affecting youth in both the City of Santa Barbara, but also Galida and Carpinteria and the county, because we know there's no boundaries with the youth there. And in some cases, we've even seen some youth from other parts of the county, in the area, you know, that, here in the area. So, you know, what should we do next? There was a lot of feedback on things that needed to be next that were captured in this report, which could be found on our webpage, or I can make the report available to you, called the Mission 2020 Report. And, I know it's very small up in the screen, but at the very bottom, you see Officer Adrian Gutierrez talking to a group of service providers, some of our service provider summit. And in this report, there's a lot of feedback, there's very clear that there was things, work that we still needed to do. And in that, we developed these work plan initiatives, which I'm going to talk about a little bit more further on in the presentation, as to where our work is going for the next five years. So, with the Mission 2020, there was also decisions that were brought to the task force group at the January quarterly meeting, and, you know, the approved decisions that the group approved was to continue in the convener role, and that is not to get into program operation. The task force does not operate programs, we don't provide services. Our effort is to really bring people together, improve coordination, improve communication, and from that, allow programs to really share resources, improve referrals, and really have more better outcomes from this coordination and being on the same page. Also, it was, you know, it was time to change the name, and the group decided that South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety was the appropriate name, and you'll see some of the numbers later as to why, you know, why that decision. We have seen a decrease in youth involved in gangs, it hasn't gone away, and we haven't, can't say we've been 100% successful, but there's been a significant decrease in activity and in number of youth involved. With that, because of that, the numbers and the decrease, we, the group also felt that it was important to refocus, to incorporate prevention intervention, as well as still continue to include suppression in the effort of working on youth violence. And the other one that was very, that came up also, was referring to youth as youth in at-risk situations rather than at-risk youth, rather than labeling youth as being at risk, really addressing the issues that surround youth, really humanizing the issues that youth face on a daily basis. With that, we also adopted a new mission statement and updated our guiding principles. The mission of the task force is to improve and support the safety and quality of life for youth, their families, and the community. And so, safety is really in the mind, not just of the youth and the families, but the community overall, and our partners, who we partner with and we work with. Our guiding principles, you know, to continue serving as a convener, and not to get, and increase partnerships, rather than get into service providing, to advocate for, you know, community-wide collective effort, not just, you know, government, or not just certain parts of the community, provide opportunities for youth in at-risk situations, and parents to provide input in the process, advocate for a full range of comprehensive services for youth in at-risk situations and their families, advocates for the needs of male and female youth susceptible to victimization. As we did our work, we realized that throughout the process, we were missing part of the community, and we were not addressing in the proper way the female population. We saw the numbers of boys decrease, but we didn't see a decrease in the numbers with females. And when I talk about numbers, I'm referring to the youth with gang terms and conditions from the probation department. We attempted to get data from various parts. The Santa Barbara County probation system had the most, the best data that we could work with to really monitor this for juveniles. And so, we used that data, and again, I'll share some numbers coming up. Advocate for evidence-based and promising programs. We were initially going to only, you know, advocate for evidence-based, and one of our stakeholders was very, you know, mentioned, came from law enforcement, saying, you know, "There's some promising programs that also have good results, that we should include." And promising, meaning that they're in the process, they employ, you know, they don't just do it out of their hip, but they employ strategies that have been found to work, they just haven't gone through the whole process of being evidence-based. Advocate for client-specific service, meaning that we don't decide what, you know, what youth need, but the youth and the families and the providers determine all that together as a team. And advocate for prevention intervention services to youth in at-risk situations, and continue to focus on the issues of youth gangs, you know, just because of the name change or refocus, doesn't mean we're not going to be focusing on those youth who we were focusing on. And at the very end, be patient, the youth problems tend to develop suddenly, and the solutions are going to happen overnight. We've seen, it takes time, and we've been doing this for a number of years. So with the task force initiatives, as we mentioned, the report, Mission 2020, from the feedback gathered, there was, there was very, there was a lot of feedback that pointed in direction that what we needed to focus on. And one of them was mental health services, and, you know, at the end of the presentation, maybe Fran Wagonick from the Santa Barbara School District can share a little bit, she's the lead of this initiative, but really looking at assessing what's available, what's missing. What we kept hearing from probation, the school district, is that youth are really facing, facing a lot of mental health needs, or issues related to mental health. And so therefore, the need was, you know, where are we missing the ball on this? Where, what's missing and what's available? So that, there's a group that's working on this, that's working with Fran. Another one was youth employment, and really, it wasn't just about providing jobs, but about providing opportunities for youth to become employable, for providing youth the opportunities to learn skills, and a second chance to make that happen. And so Mark Alvarado, who also, you know, might be able to share some, some numbers with you and some information on that, is leading that effort. In the month of May, we were able to convene seven service, service providers who focused directly on youth employment. And all these programs had shared, you know, we've all know each other's programs, but we don't collaborate. So it was really bringing these people together, these groups, these agencies, to cross-refer, to improve our system, and to be able to share with that with the community. Our next step is to continue working with them, and to be able to have a more succinct database of youth services that provide- database of youth services that provide youth and youth employment. There's also a pilot program that's part of the initiatives, really mentoring and expedited services for youth, and this is being led by Steve Delaro from County Probation. The population, we're really looking at is a very small, five-youth population exiting Los Prietos, re-entering back into the community, and us providing the resources in an expedited way that's needed for them. And next time, you know, we come to the city, we plan to bring some updates on where we're at with this work, and the improvements that we've been able to make in people and the city. Service provider coordination, we started a service provider group, network group, who Christian Hymanis, CalGrip staff person, is one of the co-chairs for that group. The service provider group meets on a monthly basis, we actually met this morning, and we're alternating locations where we meet. What we found is that, yes, service providers know of each other's programs, but they don't really know in depth sometimes of what all the programs and services that are offered. And so, today, we met at COM on Chapala and Victoria, and it was very eye-opening to all the, not just the services they offer, but through them, all the other connection of services we're able to connect families and community members with. Training and evaluation to CBOs by UCSB. We keep hearing, you know, "Where are the numbers? Where's the data? How can you quantify this?" And what we're finding is that, you know, for some programs that have the financial stability, or that have the capacity to do evaluation, it's happening, but there's a lot of programs and agencies that don't have that. And so, we're gonna be contracting with UCSB to make that available to organizations, so that we're able to evaluate and determine, you know, are we being, are these programs being effective, is the partnerships, are the partnerships working, and some of that work. But a lot of it's gonna require education and training to community-based organizations. Youth services inventory, we've been doing it in the past, we printed an annual inventory of youth services. What we find is when we print it, it's outdated a few months later. So now, we're partnering with the 211 hotline to be able to track this, but also host the information, so it's fresh, and it's up-kept, and it's ongoing. So, part of it is really working with our service provider community to make sure that their data in 211 is accurate, and people who are calling the hotline are able to access the services they need. And monitor, we're able to also monitor what calls go to what programs and at what rate. And then, a coordinator's work plan was also, you know, some of the things, coming to city council twice a year to provide updates. Initially, we were hoping to provide this update at the joint school board in city of Santa Barbara, but there was no meeting, so, you know, we're here now providing this update, we're planning to be back in the fall, or maybe join this council on the school board the next time you all meet. But also, in the work plan, coordinator's work plan is really meeting with the provider, with the task force members individually twice a year, with the opportunity to provide feedback, gather feedback from the task force members, as well as, you know, share information and improve communication across the community. With that, we've also done a lot of good work, bringing people in partnerships, creating partnerships. We're also looking at, you know, sharing with this, with the community. And so, we have a number of projects that we're working on to share, the work that the task force does, the various partners, and also how families and youth have benefited from these partnerships, but from the programs that are being, that are available to them. Some numbers, in 2009, in the whole south, in the south coast area, there was two-hundred-and-forty-five youth with gang terms and conditions, is data the probation department has shared with us. In 2015, there was sixty youth in all of the south coast. That's a seventy-five percent decrease since 2009. And so, we've seen a large decrease. Parts of the juvenile hall in Santa Maria have closed down, Los Prietos Boys Camp is now down a half of their capacity. So, these numbers have really decreased overall in probation, but also with youth that have gang terms and conditions. In the city of Santa Barbara, in 2009, there were one-hundred-and-sixty-one youth that were under the court with gang terms and conditions, and in 2015, there were thirty-seven youth. Now, you know, that is a very significant decrease. I do wanna mention, you know, it wouldn't be right to not mention that probation overall has seen a decrease over the years since 2009, however, in 2014, they begin to see an uptick in the number of youth coming to probation. Not necessarily the youth with gang terms and conditions, but overall, youth coming through their system is not a significant increase, but it is a noticeable increase. So, I did wanna share that, because we are seeing some of that, and some of the activity that we're currently seeing, or that's being shared with us from various stakeholders, probation, the schools, law enforcement, is that, you know, there's some issues that we need to address for young females. We need to provide opportunities, as there's some females who are experiencing some at-risk situations that are pretty concerning. With that, also wanna mention, through this effort, we've been able to, in the region, apply for various California gang reduction intervention and prevention grants, CalGrip grants. Overall, through from 2009 to 2015, our area has secured three-point-three million that's resulted in services in the area. A lot of those grants have been through city of Santa Barbara or city of Carpinteria. And as of last, as of 2015, one of those grants ended. Currently, there's one that's a three-year project that Christian is working with, the city Parks and Rec and Youth Employment Program is working with. But, a lot of this, these funds have been, we've been able to secure these funds because of the partnerships, because of the work that goes on in the task force, when the state looks at us and says, you know, "Is it just one city that you're affecting, or is it just the city and some partners?" But really have a wide range of partners, partnerships, you know, and increased relationships that the state really values that, and so we're able to secure, aside from, you know, having good projects that we propose. With the three-point-three million plus, that's a dollar-per-dollar match, so really, in the area, we've seen, you know, about seven million dollars that have gone to this, have been, you know, brought together through this effort, that we don't operate, the task force doesn't operate that money, we don't control any of that money, it goes, you know, through your city to partners and some city programs that serve youth throughout the south coast. But with that, four-hundred-and-forty-nine youth have received intervention services, programs, three-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-six youth have received in-school prevention, that's a total of three-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-five youth that have benefited from that. And, not just the youth, but their parents, three-hundred-and-ninety-six parents, because it's not just about the youth, it's also about working with the parents and providing resources and opportunities for the parents. Our service provider network, we actually have nineteen organizations that are a part, that meet on a monthly basis, to increase more on-the-ground coordination and services, and what's being offered in the community to various organizations. This is not the end-all, there's a lot of other partners in the community who aren't part of this list, who should be, you know, who work, but some of them, you know, have not, are not interested, and there's others that we need to connect with. For example, we have, you know, we're working to increase our collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club, and a few other organizations in the community, especially as we move and include prevention as part of the effort. And so with that, I don't know if there's any comments from Fran or Mark that you'd like to share with the council at this moment, or we could open it up for Q and A.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Yes, we could, perhaps we could have questions to you first, and then we can have, if part of the rest of the team wants to make comments, we can bring you up, and either to answer the questions, or make your own presentations. So, first of all, questions of Mr. Serrano. Mr. Hachikas?
You saw quite an up and down there of youth and gangs. Why?
I wish we could take all one-hundred percent credit for this, that, you know, we, I don't know if you're talking about the work.
Good, I just wanna know why the numbers are going down, what do we do right?
What do we do right? Well, we can't say one-hundred percent of the task force, but definitely, we definitely played a part in working with, you know, communicating. We are able to communicate when issues arise, at the strategy team level on a monthly basis. You know, in the past, we used to take months, six months, sometimes to secure partnership signatures for a grant, we're able to do it in twenty-four hours now, because of the relationships that are in place. I'll give you an example, I got a text message the other day from a probation officer who said, you know, "We arrested one of the city employment program youth, but I don't know some of the staff." So, I helped make that connection with the staff, and they're gonna be working to help this youth when he transitions out of incarceration. And so, I think some youth used to fall through the cracks, even parents used to fall through the cracks. We have a network now, I can't say it's a hundred percent, but we've been able to, you know, hold on to the some of families that would otherwise have fallen through the cracks.
Which of the programs works best?
That's a, that's a great question, I think if we ask every program, they all say they work best. But what I can say is that no one program does it alone, and the more that we bring people together, we can share resources, because, you know, the city employment program doesn't provide counseling, doesn't provide education, but the other programs do. The CalGrip program, and I'll talk, because that's a city of Santa Barbara specific, I think, provides, in the last cycle that ended, provided opportunities for a hundred-and-twenty-six youth in the south coast, direct case management, individualized services. The case managers would meet with youth, go through an assessment of needs assessment as to what do the youth and families need, not what do we wanna provide, and from there, provide the opportunities or referrals to other agencies. And so, really being, having those partnerships in place to be able to respond to the needs of youth, to have communications between the school district and probation, law enforcement, for all of us to be able to communicate and say, "Hey, there's this kid, or there's a parent, they need help." Maybe we don't have the help, maybe we have to, sometimes, it's not always we're gonna have that help, because there are sometimes limited resources, there are waiting lists that are full in some cases. And so, but it's really being conscious of that, and be able to plan to address those things as we move forward, I think has made a change.
So, since we wanna know what works, how are you working towards that?
One of those things I mentioned was working with Dr. Jill Sharkey, who will be working, who is working with, who will be working, is already currently doing research and evaluations. Dr. Sharkey and the Gvertz Graduate School of Education evaluates probation programs, Santa Barbara School District programs, Department of Social Service programs, and her team also has evaluated the last CalGrip, and is doing the evaluation for this CalGrip. You have a sheep in front of you who has, that has some outcomes on the last CalGrip that sunsetted in December, and so we're also tracking, you know, we're able to track that. Now, not all organizations, you know, we could bring youth from various organizations, say, "We do good, we do that," but they don't have the tools to evaluate their programs. And so, that's what we're doing, is making that available and accessible to programs. So, we can't come back to you and say, "A, B, C, and D programs," but it's not fair when not everybody has the same opportunity to evaluate their programs.
Mr. Hart?
So, the future funding for this effort, are you, is that dependent on another CalGrip grant being successful?
For the South Coast Task Force, or for the CalGrip services? For the South Coast Task Force, it's funding's provided by cities on a per capita basis, on an annual memorandum of understanding. For this fiscal year that we're in currently now, you know, we're approved, next year, we have to, you know, gain approval again from all the partners to continue securing that funding for the effort.
But that's for the convening role.
That's the, yeah, that's the convening role. Now, for the other stuff, like CalGrip, and where cities can apply, that'll be available next summer of 2017. The only difference is that in the past, the RFP, or the request for projects, was released every year, this, every year, so different cities had different, you know, some cities applied some years, some cities applied other years. This next time around, it's gonna be all cities in California. But I can tell you, for the last CalGrip that we applied, there was forty-eight cities that applied in California, and out of those forty-eight, nineteen were awarded, Santa Barbara was one of those that was awarded. The project was written in seven working days. We learned of it at the very end of it, we didn't know they had changed the policies on ways cities apply, and Chief Sanchez at the time sent out an email saying, "Are you all aware of this?" We were able to mobilize resources, put it together, and in seven days, we had a proposal to the state that was funded in comparison to forty-eight other cities throughout the state. So, we, our partnerships are pretty solid and good. Now, there's always room for improvement, and we'll continue to work on that.
And so, the statistics in terms of the successful intervention by the whole community is really impressive, and it's a great trend, particularly the number of juveniles on gang terms that's come down so significantly. But you did mention in your report too, that the juvenile probation referrals in south coast have ticked up in the last three years, I guess last two years, and then admissions at juvenile hall have also ticked up the last couple of years.
Yes.
I'm concerned, 'cause I think you said it as well, and it's been my experience, that the intervention has been cyclical, and then has gone away as the problem diminished, and has caused, I think, planted the seeds for it to re-arise in the future, just by not being engaged and committed to this in the long term. So, a lot of this has depended on these state grants, and is your sense that the granting agencies at the state level understand that problem, and are committed to continuing to invest in communities that are doing a good job, so that we can continue to do a good job? Or are they going to drift away, and we're gonna be stuck?
That's a great question, and I can say that they are aware of that, however, they do, you know, look at for certain things, for example, they look at, is there partnerships? Are you having an impact on a wide, is there a lot of partnerships? But they also look at, are you addressing racial and ethnic disparities, which our community is, working to that, on that, through the probation department, who also has applied with the same agency. Even if we don't have CalGrip, we have good partnerships in place. And I also wanna say, you know, it's not just the partnerships, but I think the relationships built over the years have also helped change some of the institutions, and the way some of the institutions practice, do their practice, has also changed, and for the better. The Santa Barbara School District now has, is using restorative approaches, which we've seen a decrease in expulsions and suspensions, even though, you know, there's some variances there. But that, you know, those youth, instead of being out in the street or going into the juvenile justice system, they're staying within the school. We know that when youth enter the juvenile justice system, it's not a positive outcome. For some of them, it is, because then they're connected to services, but, you know, if we could prevent that and provide that earlier on, it's better. So, even if, you know, as long as, I'm confident that moving forward, we're able, we're able to continue supporting youth and families in various creative ways, and that's, you know, with the team coming together and seeking, how do we do that? Whether we have the funding for CalGrip or not.
Well, that's really encouraging to hear, and I do know that the comprehensive approach that takes advantage of all the organizations that are doing great work, and convenes that, and gets those relationships and networks going, is the silver bullet. I mean, if there isn't, there really is, really isn't one, but if there is one, it's this collaboration and this teamwork, and that's, I absolutely understand that and am supportive of that. You mentioned the racial and ethnic disparity work, and we had just recently, in the last couple of weeks, had folks here speaking to us about implicit bias training and work in that regard, Just Communities has a plan. I know our new chief has been, has expressed interest in that and working toward that. I just wanna add, you know, my support for that, in any way the city organization can be aggressive. There clearly are people in the community who just want us to continue to be leaders in this area, and I think that's important. And I think that, you know, this scorecard and the work that you're doing shows that what we're doing is working, but we can always keep pressing on that, and bringing those folks into the conversation, you know, very specifically, they seem very charged on this issue still, and it's important, incredibly important issue, and wanna make sure that they are part of this conversation as well, too.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Serrano, I kind of fallen on what Mr. Hart had to say about the partner agencies, and I saw some opportunities here, but I don't really see them in the numbers, I'm not really sure in the scope of your work, in terms of proactive, preventional things for, in other words, kids before they're in a quote-unquote "system," before they're contact, is under a negative cloud, so to speak. And I thought about organizations like, you know, PAL, where they certainly get relationships with people in uniform that are positive, as opposed to, "Now I'm in trouble," so they can relate to them as peers and as mentors, I should say. The CADA mentor program, which is fabulous, and they, and I've worked on that telethon where we get the...
Yeah, big brother, big sister, fighting back.
And then, lastly, is something that, it kind of relates to CADA a little bit, but it's more about drug education, alcohol education, prevention, getting kids before we get into the statistical outcomes of them. Is that part of that whole scope of what you do, and is there a focus on that?
There is, and it's, you know, it's advocating for that, you know, when we applied for the CalGrip, it was also intentional that youth not only face, you know, issues at home school and the juvenile justice system, but also with substance abuse. And so, the CalGrip included an evidence-based part of it, to work with those a hundred-and-twenty-six youth, and provide education on prevention of substance abuse and prevention of addiction also. And it wasn't really, this is, these are drugs, it was more life skills and making decisions, and understanding the long-term effects of decisions and what they lead to. And there's a pre-survey and a post-survey, which was included in the evaluation, which Dr. Sharkey and the UCSB team put together, and I could send that, the CalGrip report to you, if you are interested in reviewing that as well, with the outcomes from that. You know, CADA is a partner, the youth were referred, are referred to CADA for services, whether it be case management, whether it be the probation department, and there is a lot more work, you know, especially as we've seen in the years, the increase of synthetic drugs, prescription drugs, and a number of issues come up. But it is within our radar, and it's some of the work that we discussed, how do we connect youth, you know, and mentoring. One of the programs that I do wanna, or something I do, would like to share, is there, there's... there's, there was a pilot program, it continues to exist, and that is for first-time offenders, when law enforcement interacts, interacts, where it's going to write citation. Those citations could go directly to teen court or CADA, where they don't need to go to the juvenile justice system, where youth, you know, don't, because we know that, one, that's going to take a couple of months to get, you know, through the process. And so our goal is really decreasing the time from contact to the time of service delivery. And then teen court really working, you know, they'll either go through those programs, and it'll never go into the juvenile justice system if they complete successfully, or they could divert and find another, you know, another program or another resource to refer to.
Great. And I'd like to suggest that you add Fighting Back, which is a subset of CADA, to your agencies, because that's, we do talk about--
Right.
Drugs and kids and trying to keep the--
And--
Things that you started in the first place.
And just, you know, I attend the quarterly Fighting Back Criminal Justice Task Force meetings at the DA's office with great partners there, too. So I'm there in communication and bringing this work to, you know, to share with them and vice versa, bringing, you know, the work that they're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I think before I make my comments, do we want to have contributions from Mr. Alvarado? Do you want to have anything you want to add to the, Ms. Foreman?
She asked me to say something.
Okay, well, then.
I don't want to overstep my place. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mark Alvarado, Parks and Recreation, Neighborhood and Hot Ridge Services. First of all, just kind of want to address Councilmember Hotchkiss's comment about why. And I think one of the things we have to talk about is our geography, is that we're kind of landlocked here in Santa Barbara, ocean and mountains, and we're kind of in a regional situation. So we're dealing with a relatively small geographical area, and so we're, with our work with probation and our work with police and all the collaborations, we're really able to drill down into hotspots and really understand what's going on in the community. So that really helps, and that's really what's been part of our success in that area. And then Councilmember Rouse, you were talking about kind of preventative services, and Officer Brian Kerr of PAL is on our, is on our team, and he comes to these monthly meetings, so he's a big part of that. Officer Gutierrez with the Explorers is a part of that, you know. And then a lot of our programs in Parks and Recreation, our Summer Fun, our Free Summer Swim, we're always trying to, you know, involve positive, you know, input to all the kids that we work with. And so it's all that part of that preventative intervention services that we're always trying to instill. Our work with the Boys and Girls Clubs also, we're always finding kids, we're overlapping our work with the school district. So there's a lot of overlap, and we're always trying to instill those positive reinforcements to the kids that we work with. So that's kind of one way that we try to shore up that preventative and preventative services. Okay?
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Alvarado? Okay, Ms. Foreman, Ms. Wagonek, did you want to make a comment? Thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Wagonek, Assistant Superintendent, Student Services, Santa Barbara Unified. I'd like to start by just reiterating again, and I think you get the point, that it really, the success of the task force depends on these relationships that we have with each other. And I think unless you're in the mix with those, those of us who are having those relationships, it's hard to understand. But literally what Sol was describing in terms of being able to meet the needs of individual students as needed is very, very important. I wanted to address what both Mr. Hart and Mr. Rouse talked about in terms of prevention and really getting on top of, getting on top of things before they happen. In the Santa Barbara Unified School District, we are increasingly seeing the importance of, you know, not treating the problem, but preventing the problem. And we have the benefit of working with students now that we have TK and preschool, three and four years old, and working with families, and the importance of strengthening, strengthening families, doing parent support is very important. But also doing trauma-informed care for our students. And as I have the, the ability to, or I'm thankful to serve as the lead for the mental health work group, and I believe that looking at mental health for our, for our children and youth is vital. I know that the city of Santa Barbara spends a lot of time and energy and finances addressing adult mental health issues, but I am firmly convinced that if we can address the acute and chronic needs of our children, then a lot of these other issues, including drugs and alcohol, crime, and other, other issues related to, to at-risk situations would be ameliorated once, once they get into adolescence and adulthood. So, and then finally, I think, in terms of Santa Barbara Unified and our piece, yes, restorative approaches, looking at racial and ethnic disparities has been a huge focus for us. And again, it's really, it comes back to relationships, strengthening relationships between adult and children, and that's what the task force is focused on doing, is helping make sure that adults and, and youth have relationships in whatever way possible. I do want to say that I was, prior to this position, I was the principal of La Cuesta Alta Vista. I helped, I founded the CATSAL program, which replaced El Puente, and I was an assistant principal in the district. I would say that the CalGrip, the programs, the in-school support programs that, that our youth faced was probably the most successful program that I saw for my students, because I have anecdotally saw that and how it impacted really our, our students who are in the riskiest situations, make some huge turnarounds. So with that, if there are any questions, I can take those.
Mr. Dominguez, you--
First of all, I want to say, I've seen your presentation before, and it's great. The numbers at the school district have managed to change the outlook and the outcome for so many youth in the, in the school district. I'm really excited about that. You mentioned drug and alcohol. We have a new law in Santa Barbara that's going to allow dispensaries, and there was a recent action that's going to allow a dispensary on Milpis. So I'm curious if you anticipate, given the past history when there were dispensaries, if this is going to change possibly our numbers, or if there's anything we can do as a city or as a task force, if there would be an uptick in any of the numbers because of the dispensaries?
My gut instinct, which is based on my experience as an administrator, I was an assistant principal at Santa Barbara High School when the dispensaries were, were up and running previously. Some of my experiences that I would anticipate, we would see more of, I don't want to call it pharmaceutical grade, but medical marijuana, that's what we saw before. And that's what I and my colleagues were confiscating on a nearly daily basis. So that's, my bet would be that we will see an uptick in that.
And does that tend to stick with certain parts of the student population? Is it universal now? It's been a while since I've been in high school, and I did, I did teach high school for a year, including at a continuation high school, so I have a little bit of experience. But my only expertise is knowing you can make a huge difference. I have no idea how we make the difference, so I'm leaving that up to you guys.
My experience is that it has, is not difficult to procure marijuana if you're a high school student in, in the city of Santa Barbara.
Does it end up being the grass itself for smoking, or edibles, or both?
We're seeing an increase in edibles. And edibles, where I've seen the increase has actually been in younger students, so we're talking, you know, junior high school students. But, you know, I could, I could go on and on about really what we see, but yes, we've seen edibles, we've seen smokable, really high, high-grade, high-quality marijuana that, that students are, are able to get, so.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Maria?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, so, thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Dominguez, because I think with the possible legalization of marijuana, I'm glad we're just putting, we're planting a seed, a bad way to say it, with the gang task force, or excuse me, the task force on youth safety, that that is something to keep an eye on. But I do want to compliment Ms. Wagonek, Mr. Alvarado, and Mr. Serrano, because I think you're part of the success. You're dedicated professionally, but also personally, because I know you all in the youth-serving world. And, and Mr. Hotchk, Councilmember Hotchkiss asks a really great question, why are we successful right now? And when I look at the landscape of youth-serving groups, Freedom for Youth actually does what we, what everybody wants in terms of, it's prison rehabilitation. Oh, my God, they're going to let someone loose, did they get some rehabilitation? And that's what Freedom for Youth does for the, for the boys in the camp. And so they come out with a program and support, Project Heroes, Proyecto Edoiz, which is, you really didn't talk about all of the different activities--
There's so many.
--that you're plugged into, right? All the restorative justice programming that's going on, and then, and then the programming that you have, the presentations you have during your meetings about sex trafficking, and then on the other end of the spectrum, all the wonderful transition programs that are at our city college. So I look at PAL, I look at the Boys and Girls Club, our own teen programs, and what Susan Young does with the Teen Coalition, Y-Strive. So here's just the, the city right now, to me, the South Coast feels just very supportive of youth and families. And I think that's part of the big picture, why gang activity is down. And also, for me, I think it's social media. I think there used to be lonely kids, and now they're all connected, and, and they don't need to find that street family anymore. That, you know, that's just me. But the, but the one comment that I'd really like to emphasize is that we need to keep funding in place for this, because what happens in the past is gang activity spikes, everybody rushes, there's programming, and then once things get quiet, oh, we find the funding, we move the funding to something else. And I think we're at that critical point right now. We have a new chief, she's going to come to the meetings, we're going to get the momentum and, and response and connection to the community. And really, we need to continue. I really give the school district a lot of credit, that's also a big part of it, Mr. Hotchkiss. The school district doing restorative justice means you're asking that child to make it right some other way besides making them criminal. So it's all, it's all coming together. It's, it's come together, that, you know. So I'm really, I'm really grateful to see your presentation and full of, full of compliments for you today. And then my, my message to my colleagues is, please, let's not, let's keep this funded, because this is the temptation we're going to have. Well, everything's quiet. Well, it doesn't take long, right, for something to spark, and kids here and there, so, thank you.
Maria, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The marijuana that you mentioned in the high school, I think it was primarily, do you have any idea where that comes from?
Depends on the quality of the marijuana. I mean, I don't ask, they don't tell. It's kind of that sort of situation. But you can tell, when you confiscate marijuana, you can tell the quality of it, whether it's medical grade or not. Now, how it's getting to our students, it's being dealt, you know, it's, it goes through suppliers. But I want to say, going back to our, you know, and this relates to the focus on what we're doing, what we're trying to do is if, you know, create healthy youth so that they, they aren't smoking and using, and we're talking about marijuana, but, but there are certainly other drugs far more, far more dangerous that our youth are, are using. And so really, it comes back to, how do we create healthy youth so that this isn't an issue that we have to talk about?
Are you talking about heroin and methamphetamines, or what?
Sure.
And what's the proportion of one to the other, in your observation?
I couldn't report on that at this moment. I mean, in terms of--
Wouldn't it be more marijuana than the others?
Oh, yeah. It would definitely be more marijuana.
I'd say that, hopefully, I don't know.
I can add that, you know, there has been some increase in heroin use, and also in synthetic drugs like spice, bat salts, and also what's called, you know, the dabbing or the, the oil, the THC oil that is being used with vaporizer pens. And so it's not just, you know, a change in the grade and those things, but it's also how youth access it and the culture around it also changing.
And what ages primarily are we talking about?
Oh, I'd say we're talking 12 to 18, 19 is who we're working with. But we certainly see more of it--
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I was going to say, we, we see an uptick, an increase, you know, are really, times when we see the, the jump is kind of eighth, ninth grade, you know, if we're going to see an increase.
Junior high school.
Yeah.
You mentioned that even if, you're starting to work with children that are as young as three and four years old? Did I hear that correctly?
We serve in the Santa Barbara Unified Schools District, preschool and transitional kindergartners who are three, four, and five years old. And those students experience trauma that can affect them and impact their outcomes when they're 12, 13, 14, 18 years old. So really, for us, it's identifying the traumas as they occur and working with youth when they're, when they're children.
And do they, do they tell you about it, or is it, are we talking about a bruise or something?
Well, it's all of it. I mean, sometimes they tell us, but it's also about us as educators recognizing it without them telling us.
And then, at that point, you try to get some sort of intervention, or at least go talk to families?
We currently have, we've placed through our LCAP process, the new funding process from the state. We have marriage and family therapists in our elementary schools to work with children, and we see a need to increase that.
And this is bilingual, I assume?
Yes.
You mentioned racial and ethnic disparities. Could you tell me what you were talking about there?
Okay.
With reference to the schools or in general?
I'm not sure. It was just a phrase I think that you--
I know, Sol mentioned it, I did too, and then he can expand on this. We did see, prior to the implementation of restorative approaches to, to issues in our schools, that was actually in response to the fact that we were suspending and expelling primarily Latino students at more than twice the rate of white students. And in our community, we know, we talk white and Latino. Other communities, it's black and white, or black and Latino and white. But, but we saw that we were, we had a great disparity racially in terms of who was being suspended and expelled. And so since we've implemented restorative approaches, we've seen that disparity lessen in terms of suspensions, and we actually are now at parity with our expulsions in terms of, of percentage-wise, our expulsions and our number of expulsions has decreased.
So that's in proportion to the population in general?
Right.
Okay. So you thought you were being stricter on Latino kids than you were on others?
We actually were. So Latino students were roughly 42% of the overall population, but they were being suspended, they were 72% of the expulsions, roughly.
And the reason being that somebody just said, oh, they're Latino, we need to be tougher?
Well, I think it comes down, it goes back to the bias, the implicit bias training that we were talking about, and so we're, we're looking at, we're looking at our own practices and trying to, you know, be, be mindful of what those practices are.
But if the infraction is the same, no matter who the person is or the kid is, the punishment is the same, correct?
The approach to working with our, our youth or our children should be the same regardless of who they are.
And you don't think it was?
I don't think it was.
Thank you.
I think the data, because Dr. Sharkey reviewed that, and there's also a report on the schools, and actually, our Santa Barbara School District is better than other parts of the county, you know, I will say that. But a lot of this work started with probation, really looking at their, their numbers. I mean, what they saw was that the population of, for example, Ventura County is twice the size of Santa Barbara County, and their numbers are lower than our numbers in, in Santa Barbara. So it was like, okay, how do they have more people? But yeah, we incarcerate more kids in our county. So when looking as to the population, what was happening, the data showed that Latino kids were incarcerated at a higher rate or sent to juvenile hall at a higher rate than, than the white counterparts for the same crimes, for the same offenses. And so there was a disparity there. And some of that is really looking into, you know, it's not just guessing about it, but looking into the data. And the data, what the data reflected is that in some cases, there's procedures in place, but they get overridden. So the question is, why do they get overridden? In other cases, there might be, you know, procedures in place that are biased to some population. For example, they were, in part of incarcerating youth, they also looked at what agencies send youth to juvenile hall, and the probation department is the one that sends the most to juvenile hall. So it's not the city police department, the sheriffs, it's probation themselves that incarcerate youth to the juvenile hall. And we're looking at those youth entering, there was things like, is a parent available? If the parent wasn't available, sometimes they incarcerate it. If the parent wasn't available, sometimes they incarcerate it. Well, there's no need. That's a social, Department of Social Service issue if the parent's not available, you know. So there's a lot of issues that are being looked at as to why is this happening? Another one was, you know, are they affiliated to gangs?
Let me stop there for a second. You just said if a parent was available, they wouldn't get incarcerated. If their parent wasn't available, they would. All right, that doesn't seem to me to be resolvable by any kind of bias training. That's just a...
Right, no, so what I'm saying is, right, through the bias training, other things have surfaced that we're able to address that need, that should be updated. So the bias is not only addressing the biases, but also other things that we weren't mindful of, or that the department, the probation department was being mindful. But the bias training, or the bias trainings are looking as to, you know, what's going on. And again, it's implicit bias, meaning that some of it is unconscious, some of it is not, you know, until you look at the data and you really explore what's going on here.
Well, some of it might not be biased at all. The one example you just gave was not biased.
Right. It's a procedure. So the system, you know, the system itself, the way a process, the way policies are made affects different youth. And so, really looking at that. So probation is doing is really creating a database for all those youth that are going into the juvenile hall to track everything from where, what zip codes they're coming from, what drug offenses they have, where, you know, because it was, in the past, it was they're just going into the hall for X crime. Now, it's really looking deeper as to, you know, how are they getting there? And really, you know, what's, what's, what's the driving force? And, you know, there's, it's nowhere, we're ready to, I think, present some final work on it, but it's a work in progress. And I'm also a part of that on a monthly basis, a team that looks into some of what the biases are.
We've got to be careful not to train for the right thing, not the wrong thing. So, and knowing the real cause is the first consideration.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Well, two questions. One is the uptick in probation or in that area.
Referrals.
Can you describe what you see behind that?
Great question. So I did, you know, and seeing the numbers, I was like, well, what's going on? So I asked probation for, you know, the numbers and the increases. And the increases were for petty theft and/or burglary. And so, that's, that's what's driving the increase in juveniles. Where specifically, you know, are they going to stores, they're going to, you know, somebody's house? That's still to be determined. But it is due to increase in, you know, petty theft and those kinds of things.
All right. And then, second, what are you missing? What is the piece, what is the next piece that you see that's not there, that, besides just a bigger check? But I mean, what function or what activity? Do you have any insights that you can share with us on that?
Right. And I do want to say, you know, we, we've asked for the same amount. We haven't asked for money as a task force. We're, you know, we're good. I, you know, and Friend is also the co-chair of the strategy team. And I think in the overall, when we all meet, there's still work that, you know, like, for example, the mental health issues. That's a big piece that's not just affecting the schools, not just affecting probation, but community overall. And really, there's a lot of things that, you know, need to make, need to be looked into, and partners that need to be brought in, like county mental health and whatnot. But there's work that we're doing with that to make that happen. And the work that Friend's group is working on with mental health, you know, and other issues, more parenting. And so, we're looking, how can we bring resources to increase parenting skills or access to those services? So it's more of, you know, the partners, but also, how do we bring funding to the area for those services that are still of need?
All right. Ms. Farman? Okay. Come, come, you'll need to come up to the mic and join in officially.
So I just to, just to clarify, in answer to your question, you know, what's next? What do we need to do? I just want to kind of, not to go over this again. When the questions were asked about, what have we accomplished? Where do we need to go? So the five initiatives that you have up there are the where we need to go. So here are the holes. So the hole is, what's happening around mental health services for kids? What about youth employment? Okay, that's a hole, okay? What, in answer to Councilmember Hotchkiss's question, what really works? Let's get a pilot program so we could really look at 10 kids that have a lot of positive outcomes. What's their intervention? What really works? Next one, okay, service provider coordination. There's still a lot of the left hand not telling the right hand what's happening, okay? So absolutely, Councilwoman Murillo was correct. There are many initiatives going on and with the same intent, but they're not necessarily connected. And I'm sure that they have contributed to these numbers. So we are still, we're still working on creating this service provider network. Last one, what's out there? So what services are out there? The youth services inventory, same thing. We struggle with the same thing in 211. Is it listed? Is the service listed? So we're just trying to get everybody on the same page. So that, I hope, concisely answers what needs to happen. Because that was after 35 interviews, and this is what we came up with about, let's come up with a direction of five things that we could work on. So that's what that is.
Great. Well, that's a wonderful way to bring this back together. I'm recalling the, that when I got on council, two things were starting and floundering, or they, I won't say they were floundering, but at least the light bulb was on and it seemed like yet full birth had not occurred. And that was with the, with the little kids, the little, I mean, the two, two and three-year-olds and that sort of, that whole effort that was really gaining some momentum. And obviously, now we're eight years later, or seven years later, and so we're now, we're dealing with kids that are, that some, many of whom, or some of whom have been blessed with having some of those resources. And the other one was this very, this coordination effort. When it first started, the first couple of efforts were really unfortunate. I mean, it was, they did not work. And so, it really is the tenacity of all involved to try again. Didn't work. They didn't just go, ah, heck, this isn't happening, let's, let's stop. But rather, there was some stubbornness that kept this going. And so, you now are finding some extraordinarily good results, or not finding, but you're helping to create. The collaboration is, is kind of magical. So thank you for all your good work, and congratulations for your successful results. And of course, we all want this to just be just the beginning.
Right. And in closing, I did want to acknowledge, you know, that we, a lot of it also, we have to acknowledge that parents and youth are making different, also doing their part of it. And it's not just the stakeholders or the programs, or it's the community overall doing things different and stepping up to really taking on the, creating a community that's safe. So it's not just the schools, but it's in partnership with everybody.
That's a beautiful way to wrap this up. Thank you for the presentation today. Okay, so then, on to the... Okay, thank you. So I had overlooked a report from the Finance Committee, so. Mr. Hart?
The Finance Committee met and discussed the capital maintenance process. Mr. Dewey gave a presentation about the work that he does in monitoring the needs of the capital infrastructure in the city and committing resources to maintain the buildings. And we're going to continue the infrastructure discussion, which this was a part of, at a later date.
Great, thank you. All right, and then, council and staff communications. Ms. Murillo?
Thank you. I'd like to report from C3H, the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness. We met on Thursday morning, this was the policy council, and had two hours of updates from North County and South County. And there's been an effort to do some outreach and carpentaria. We care about carpentarias, and they're, they're doing a good job there, connecting to other homeless people there. And then, in terms of our city, a new full-time coordinator has been hired to do the downtown street outreach and the Milpis homeless outreach. And so, there's one woman, Kathleen Wilson, she worked for PATH, Casa Esperanza for a while, knows the, our community. And, and so, that's all, that's all good news. Unfortunately, there's been a couple of deaths in the homeless community. And the, the, the street outreach folks are looking at what happened. A part of it had to do with when the jail releases people. And they sometimes do it in the middle of the night. It's kind of a longer thing. But the, C3H is looking at those problems and those challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, both the Conchuma Conservation Release Board and the Conchuma Operation and Maintenance Board met last week, or the Conchuma Operation and Maintenance Board Operations Committee last week. The COME Board was about the nuts and bolts of maintaining the Conchuma conduit and the various valves and suchlike. It is experiencing, it is now, it's a system that was built in the early and mid-'50s, and much of it is coming to the end of its useful life. And so, these, these valves are, they're very pricey and are starting to be replaced one at a time. And the CCRB met, and really, this, this year is, is going to be, could be, a dramatic one with, with a host of water supply agreements coming to the fore, the biological opinion for the steelhead. Trout could be coming to, finally coming to fruition. We do have also the, the beginning of the downstream release at, at Conchuma, where the downstream users are going to take roughly a third of what's left in Conchuma. Water needs to get all the way to Lompoc. There's a frantic effort to, to preserve the steelhead that are there. Water tanks have been installed, and trucks are delivering water up to these tanks, which then trickles water down into three ponds in a Tributary Creek. And staffers are trapping, you probably saw the article, the Independent did a piece on that, where the smaller fish are being trapped and put in these refuge ponds. It's a daunting task, and we'll see how successful they are. It's a delicate one, and I, I hope that they're successful. Okay, so with that, we have some... Oh, sorry, I didn't see your light on there. Ms. Dominguez?
The Milpis Action Task Force, Councilmember Murillo and Hotchkiss were also there. They're changing their name to the PATH Neighborhood Committee to reflect more the geographic area which the task force operates. They talked a little bit about their security operations. They've hired a private security firm that's going to be taking a closer look at the neighborhood. They revised some of their internal processes. It was their year anniversary, and they had an event later in the week, which I was lucky to attend. And they've made a lot of progress in that year. They hired a new local director, created a new list of their drug policy and alcohol policy for do's and don'ts for residents. And overall, have done much more towards recruiting new members for the nonprofit and training the ones they have there. And it's very exciting, all the changes taking place. So we're hopeful that that's going to show up in terms of the community and how it looks and how it's received, and ultimately, in getting people housed. I think the stats were they've housed 62 people in this year, served thousands of others in numerous ways, including helping to find people jobs. I know they had a, an employment seminar there, where a lot of the nonprofits and government agencies from the county showed up and discussed ideas and created projects to help find people jobs. So it was great to see them doing all these different things.
Thank you. All right. No more lights then. All right, so we have some closed sessions coming up.
Item number 13, conference with city attorney, pending litigation. The pending litigation is Jared Hall versus the City of Santa Barbara. Item number 14, conference with city attorney, pending litigation. The pending litigation is John Franklin versus the City of Santa Barbara. Item number 15, conference with city attorney, pending litigation. The pending litigation is Kent Waboshowski versus the City of Santa Barbara. And item number 16, conference with city attorney, pending litigation. The pending litigation is Troy Common versus the City of Santa Barbara.
And no reporting out is anticipated. Okay, so after that, then, thank you.